We'll call the August meeting of Port Edward's Village Board. Where am I standing up? I tell you, under no objection, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance first, and we'll follow that by a moment of silence for all of the war dead that preserved our freedom. I...
...pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, now, after missing out the agenda already, I will ask the clerk to move please.
Trustee Martinson.
Here.
Trustee Duncan.
Here.
Trustee Saylor.
You would be at the fire.
Trustee Mitchell.
Here.
Trustee Grunden.
Here.
Trustee Bingham.
Here.
Okay, Trustee Saylor, as I just mentioned, is... They have a box alarm, which means Rapids Fire Department called him uptown for a fire, so that's where most of the gentlemen are, including Chief, of course, he won't be here tonight either. We got the Pledge of Allegiance out of the way, and I will entertain a motion approved the minutes of the July board meeting. Motion by Trustee Duncan, second.
Second.
Second by Trustee Mitchell. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Okay, public comments on agenda items. Mr. Caston wishes to speak, but this is technically an issue that was brought up to my attention. I don't believe it's going to need any action, but it is a good historical thing about what happened probably 30 or 40 years ago when the village sold a fire truck to the Lions Club for $1. So, Mr. Caston.
Well, our Honorable President and trustees, the Port Edward's Lions Club obtained the 1937 Diamond T fire truck from the village of Port Edward's summers more than around 42 years ago. And part of the things that happened at that time is we were told that the village had the right... First right of refusal. We have an opportunity to sell it. When we do sell it, the money will be put into our donation account, which means we do not use it for anything other than giving it away to Summers. So we have that opportunity to do that. It presently costs us $95 a month for insurance. We just put a battery in it for $125, and we drive it in the parade, so it gets about six miles a year of use. So it has become a costly item for us to maintain, and so we have the opportunity to sell it. So I'm here to tell you that you have the first right of refusal for the fire truck. If you would care to purchase a bat, then you may do so.
I did mention this to Attorney Apps two or three weeks ago, and I would defer to, at this point, to Nick to see if there is anything that more that we have to do besides saying thank you for your service to the Village Lions Club and whatever you make on its sale. You certainly deserve the money because of all you've done for us and especially even the building we're sitting in right now.
Well, I guess the village doesn't... The board doesn't need a motion to do nothing on something. If somebody were to make a motion regarding exercising the first right of refusal, that would be one thing, but if it is the village's wish to not... The board's wish not to exercise that first right of refusal, simply not doing anything is enough for that.
Anybody want to do anything? I don't want to do anything, and again, from the bottom of my heart, I'm sure the board and the board's passed, thank you for your service in the village of Port Edward's. Good luck selling that fire truck.
Thank you very much. We do have a little bit of offer for it, so we will put it in the donation account. And as you well know, we do give a lot of money way into the village for various things, in the high school, for some of the things they need there and for our Lions activities. So I thank you very much for your no vote.
No are in action.
Yeah, there you go. Politicians are accused of doing nothing, so we really did nothing, and we accomplished something. How's that?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Caston. Okay, any other public comments? Kathy?
I would like to know who put the sign up on the bike trail when it was designed that says "No Motorized Vehicles", and how is that enforced?
I can answer the first one. The village posted that because we, of course, maintain it and everything, keep motorized vehicles off, and the only motorized vehicles that are probably allowed to go up there are DPW maintenance vehicles for the village or the police department, which, when I was still working, I used to have the guys go up there like once a week or once every two weeks, just drive it early in the morning or later at night, just to see what's going on, so to speak. But other cars should not be there, and the enforcement, I would have to defer to Chief.
Well, it's the law enforcement vehicle that I'm thinking about. It's parked on Village Trail where it says "No Motorized Vehicles". Parked there often that I see it, and I wonder what kind of a message that's sending to our youngsters and for the residents.
At this point, if you would like to discuss further, I would refer to Chairman Martinson of the Public Safety Committee, and we could make it an agenda item at their next meeting. Do you wish that?
When is the meeting?
We will set the calendar tonight, but it's the last Fourth Thursday of the month.
The last...
The Fourth Thursday of the month. It's at six... Excuse me, at 5:00, and it's at the municipal building.
So if you would like to do that, see Chairman Martinson. Anybody else? Okay, without objections from the board, I would like to move Item 9A as an add-on under New Business, President's Appointments to the Police and Fire Commission, Pat Tyler to a term that will expire in 2022, and Scott Stewart to a term that will expire in 2023. And I would ask Mr. Apps, before we go any further as to why we are increasing from three to five, and I understand it was on the recommendation of the commission's attorney, Greg Gerobic.
That's correct. Attorney Gerobic recommended increasing it from three to five because we need three to act, and in the event that any of the three would be unable to act for any reason, there wouldn't be a quorum. So under the statute, you can act with three, but five allows you to act under almost any circumstances because it's much more rare that three out of five are not able to do it. So it's really a practical matter, if nothing else. Plus, I guess I would also add that more voices on the Police and Fire Commission probably is beneficial from a substantive standpoint.
Plus, the fact is, is that if two people from the Police and Fire Commission stop and say good morning to each other, you have a quorum.
Well, you still need three for a quorum, but I think Port Edward's is small enough that even that can happen accidentally from time to time.
Would anybody like to make a motion to what I read?
Move.
Second. Motion by Trustee Duncan, second by Trustee Bingham. Any discussion on the matter? Hearing none. All those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Stewart, Mrs. Tyler, and thank you for your service to the village. And at this time, there will be a very short brief orientation with Attorney Apps, and you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we will now move on to the President's Report. My items here will be covered by Administrator Kornman, and the Tax Incremental District Number Two update will be handled by former acting Administrator Scott Harrington from Vandewell, out of Madison. So, Michael, the new committee minutes procedures. If you would break that on the... or explain that to the board, please.
Sure. It's customary in many communities, municipalities, to approve minutes at the committee level and at the board level, and that's partly because that's the place where they're taken, and those are the members that are... were present at the meeting. So it's really trying to keep things consistent that the board that... or the committee that created the minutes approves them as well. You can still have... will still have draft minutes that the board can review, but they just formally won't be approved till the following committee meeting that one committee meets.
And this is something that a lot of county boards do, and I know Mike said they did it up in Burnett County, and a lot of municipalities do the same thing because my feeling on it, how can I vote to approve something I wasn't at? So it's... That's why it's gonna... It's a housekeeping thing to me, more than anything, so... And the motions still come to the board from the chairman, you know? They've still come forward. And if you'll notice, tonight, we're doing that, the committee chairman's comments. That's a time where he can ask or she can ask, anybody have any questions, you know, on the minutes, or like Mike said, there'll be draft minutes. We still have our discussions, so... Okay, moving on to President's Report, Item B. Scott, it's good to see you up here.
Great to see all of you. Thanks for having me. And I appreciate the fact that this is at the full board, and I talked to Mike about getting on a committee agenda, and some of those were full, and it's great to be able to address all of you. To just give you an update on kind of where this process is, as I think most of you are aware, you have one tax incremental finance district that kind of runs from Urco on the west all the way to the Dam Tar Island. That district was created in 2009, which was, you know, about a year after the mill closed, before there was any known idea of what was going to occur, but understanding that things, you know, some kind of redevelopment of the mill would take place. Plus, at that time, Urco had just purchased the former school forest property, immediately west of it, and was actively planning for a use at that time. Unfortunately, the Great Recession kind of put a crimp on some of those plans, but the district has remained, and it has gained appreciably in value. So it started out with a base value of about $9 million, $9.5 million. So all the property within the boundary of the district was worth $9.5 million. That has gone up pretty dramatically today to... Where's my list? To $17, almost $18 million. So there's been a nice gain in value, and how a TIF works is that that change in value... So the difference between today's value, let's say $8 million... Or $18 million versus the $9 that it was worth, the $9 million in difference, the taxes that are paid on that flow to the district to be used for eligible costs. Over the years, those eligible costs have included the village's portion of redoing Edward's Avenue. Most of that was funded under a state grant, but the village had to pick up some of the engineering-related costs. You did have one TIF developer agreement with a business in downtown. There's been some work that we've done with the TIF in trying to move things forward too, but expenditures have been, you know, pretty modest, maybe about $700,000. So it's left you with quite a bit of money in the bank. And in talking with Mike, and I know Mike's talked to the SERP committee about some public improvements that are needed in the area that were not included in the original TIF plan, and wanting to get those in. The other thing that's really prompting a change at this time is a small boundary amendment in that the warehouse building was not in the district, but all of those little lots in front of it were in the district, and that's what kind of connected the west end of the district to the east end of the district. The TIF district has to be continuous, just like city boundaries have to be. Can't have little islands here and there, the whole thing kind of have... All the properties sort of have to touch each other. And at that time, the warehouse building was on the same parcel as the main mill, most of the admin building, the chip building, so most of the improved value of the Dam Tar property was on this one single parcel. Last fall, the board approved a certified survey map to kind of create a lot just for the warehouse. And so all of those little lots that were of record, I mean, you know, there used to be, I guess, a bunch of houses kind of on that south side of Edward's Avenue. And so although long ago, the mill bought all of those houses and tore them down, all those lots of record continued to be Dam Tar, or none of the previous mill owners ever filed a plat or a certified survey map to kind of combine all of that. But when the CSM was created, all of those got absorbed into one master parcel that will by then default end up in the TIF. And what that means is that that building's valued at about $2.2 million, and so $2.2 million will effectively shift from the general tax roll onto the TIF. And that main mill parcel's already lost a tremendous amount of value. The TIF financially is in good shape, and so in order to preserve the tax base for the diligence general fund, the school district, the county, and the community college, we're making this change to take the warehouse out of the district so it stays on the general tax rolls. But in order to maintain contiguity where everybody touches each other, instead of going down the south side of Edward's Avenue, we'll go down the north side and basically pick up the YMCA property in order for the west side of the TIF to be connected to the east side. So the boundary amendment is, you know, on paper, pretty minor, adjusting a couple of lines, but it has a pretty big deal in terms of tax base in keeping the tax base out of the TIF because it was really, you know, it would be kind of a windfall to the TIF. It isn't new value, it's a transfer of value, and the TIF should really all be about new value. So there's that boundary amendment, and then there's also a change in the spending plan. So I know you all spent all weekend, you know, poring over this document, so I won't, you know, spit it back out at you, but about halfway through the document is a table of proposed... or potential expenditures, so it's on page 19. It's very important to understand, first of all, that this is a spending plan. It is not a budget. What this is saying is that if the funds were available, if the village board was so inclined, these are the things that we can spend our TIF funds on. In order to do that first, the Joint Review Board, which consists of one member from the village, one from the school district, one from the county, one from the community college, and one member at large, they ultimately have to approve creating a TIF district and any amendments to it. And part of what they approve is the spending plan and primarily the overall level of spending. How much money can you spend? And what we're actually doing is reducing that total because development has really been delayed, and we haven't seen the growth in the district that we anticipated. The total level of spending is dropping from what was originally approved of about $13 million down to about $8. But we've also kind of changed up the projects. And so the projects now include infrastructure within the vicinity of the TIF, which is permitted under the law, within a half mile, such as Second Street. Market Avenue was already in there, but that's been kind of reemphasized. And then the Village Plaza, where Village Hall is, that parking lot, the alley, facade improvements on that whole building have been added in here, as has Wisconsin River Drive, and maybe someday, you know, a new bridge out to the island if there's ever to be development there. So those are really the two primary changes. I wouldn't expect issues from the Joint Review Board since really all of this kind of works to their advantage in that the spending plan is being reduced and that we're preserving their tax base as well as the village's. The process for approving an amendment is that the Joint Review Board holds an initial kind of organizational meeting. That's scheduled for August 28th at 3:00. After that, the Plan Commission will hold an advertised public hearing. That will be at 4:00. And then the PIT Committee will look at it at 5:00 that night. The Plan Commission will pass a resolution. I know that's not something they typically do, but that is required under the TIF law. And then on September 11th, at the regular board meeting, you all would take action on a resolution yourselves. Assuming that you all approve it, then it would go to a final Joint Review Board meeting, which is tentatively scheduled for September 20th. We're waiting to get confirmation that the members are available at that time, where they would adopt their own resolution, basically ratifying your approval, and after that, it would all get packaged up and sent to the Department of Revenue. So that's just a very quick overview of the kind of current state of the district and the reasons for the change and the schedule. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
The members, again, are village rep, school board rep, and who's the third?
So it's all the taxing jurisdictions. So village, school, county, community college, and then a member at large.
Tables are open. Benefit. You may have said it, but can you do it in one sentence for me?
Yeah. You know, TIF districts are really the most powerful economic development tool that communities in Wisconsin have. And so, as we kind of talked about, since this district was created, there's been $9 million of additional value added within it. And the taxes from that $9 million all go to the district. So as a result, you now have quite a savings, if you will, account, a fund balance that you can now use on projects that are, you know, in the TIF or related to the TIF or near the TIF, within a half mile, to help, you know, propel development within it further. The idea of creating a tax increment district is that but for creating the district, we wouldn't see the magnitude, the timing, the quality of development that we would have gotten otherwise. So it's a way to really try to accelerate development because it gives you tools to work with in terms of infrastructure or assisting projects with meeting financial gaps, property acquisition, property clearance, blight elimination, environmental remediation are all eligible expenditures under the TIF law.
Who owns the island of Port Edward's?
Who owns the what?
The island.
The island, Dam Tar owns the island.
Dam Tar owns it.
And so that was put in the TIF at that time, thinking... Because it was very unclear what properties Dam Tar was going to keep and what they were going to sell. And there was some talk initially that maybe they would sell the island and make it available for development. Perhaps that's still possible in the future, and so including it in the district. There's no downside to being in a district if you're a property owner. The taxes are the same, it's just a matter of where does the money go. And so if that were to sell, and a new bridge out to it was needed or a road down it, the TIF could assist with that.
Thanks, Scott.
Yes.
Scott, the list of projects that you have, is... Are they listed in what you think should be the priority?
There are kind of two lists. There's a list of projects, but then there's a list of dates, roughly years, in which they would occur. One of the things we tried to do in kind of restructuring the projects was moving the village infrastructure up. And so... And that you could complete a number of projects between now and 2020 based on the funds that are already available without having to borrow any money. So if there were no new development in the district, you would tap out your fund balance by the end of 2020. If you wanted to continue with projects, you would have to borrow the funds. And so we tried to put in a schedule of projects so that you could get those done with funds on hand and not have to consider borrowing until later. Again, you're not required to do anything on the list at any time. It's all strictly up to what you want to do. I will say too that the project costs, you know, such as reconstruction of Second Street or Wisconsin River Drive, the numbers that are in here are kind of more a function of what the fund could afford than necessarily what that's going to cost. So some of those projects may require additional village funds, your capital improvements to augment the rest of it, but the TIF could pick up this share of it. The final thing to note too is that, you know, well, some thought and time has gone into this list and how these things are scheduled. Once this amendment's approved by the Joint Review Board, you have the freedom to move the timing of line items, the amount of line items. All you're kind of really held to is this bottom line of a total of $8 million in spending. But how you want to allocate that between the projects, that can change over time. You don't have to go back through this amendment process in order to do that.
Mike, on that issue, you keep pretty much on top of that and talk with Scott and... Anything further? Welcome back, Eric.
Sorry, I'm sorry I'm not dressed up yet.
You're busy. You're busy in Rapid.
Glad you're safe.
Well, thank you, Scott, and we will hear more later on in the closed session.
Yes.
All righty, that brings us to Item 6C. Is the motion to adopt Resolution 28-4, Amending Ordinance 2.03, Providing for Selection and Duties of the Vice President. I will entertain a motion on that. So move. Motion by Trustee Bingham, second. Second by Trustee Grunden, discussion. If you'll bear with me, you all, I don't know, you didn't get one of the...
Yeah, it should have been in the...
Oh, okay, he's got one in the packet. And mainly, it spells out there for the control of meetings, absence of the village president, and the selection process of the village vice president, which will be during the organizational meetings from now on in April. And as Attorney Apps explained, when we agreed to go with this and select one, this follows with the state of Wisconsin giving towns and villages a little flexibility with home rule. Did I say that properly or whatever? And it eliminates having to elect somebody every meeting. Pardon?
So there's a first for everything?
Yeah, well, the person that's the vice president wasn't here that night, so...
I understand. I'm just referring to the fact that something in the president administration involved home rule to a municipality or school district.
Am I okay to proceed then? I mean, this legal talk, it's going, it's like watching the tennis match sometimes, so... Anyway, we have the motion by Trustee Bingham and second by Trustee Grunden. Any discussion on this item? The only further thing I have to say is make sure you're at the organizational meeting next April. Otherwise, you tend to get nominated for this. So, all those in favor of the resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
There's not one extension.
Oh.
I'm not gonna... Since I'm supposedly taking this position, I'm not voting for myself.
I'll take that, that you are officially now the village vice president.
Then I... Then I accept, I guess.
Hit the Bible.
Okay, I'll give this back to you before I lose it. And seriously, Dana, thank you. I'll remind you when the organizational meeting is in April. Right on the money being here. All right, committee reports, Airport Commission. I will be now... I will be now... I will... Sorry, Joanie. I will now be taking over that lead, and you have in your packets the minutes from the June and July Airport Commission meetings. I'm sure you looked them over, and if there are any things in either one that you would like to discuss, we can do so now. Otherwise, the only thing I have is I'm inviting Jeremy Sick... Otherwise, the only thing I have is I'm inviting Jeremy Sickler, the airport manager, to our September meeting, because he offered that he would like to come, like quarterly. And he has a whole bunch of stuff right now with all the developments, you know, coming in. I went by the airport a couple of weeks ago, and there's a jet in there where the tail of that plane stood about 20 feet above the terminal. So there's a lot of traffic coming in, so it's a good thing for the area. That's all I have. We will move down to the CIRP committee and Chairman Saylor.
We had a meeting July 17th at 5:00 p.m. We discussed with the Public Works Report. We had a chip seal bid that we talked about. And let me just make sure. I am going to make a motion to accept a bid of $34,552 from Scott's Construction for chip sealing. Fifth Street from Verbunker to La Tender, Seventh Street from La Tender to the end of La Tender, Levine Avenue from First Street to Third Street, and Monroe.
Motion by Chairman Saylor, as read. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Mitchell, discussion. Mike, I would like just a little, I mean, I'm familiar with it, but I think we should have an update on clarification on what really had to go on to get the streets ready, the patching and stuff.
Right. We had a couple of things going on here. We had some patches on sections we're going on here. So we had, those were completed end of last week, and now the chip sealing can go over those patches. And so we stayed within budget on the chip sealing, what we budgeted for 2018. And this project, I believe they will be in the last week of the month to do the chip sealing.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay.
What's the bidding process for that? Is there a process or did we...
Yeah, the process is we ask for proposals, we set what projects, what streets need to be chip sealed. We advertise that bid, and companies come in and submit bids.
So how many did we, how many bids did we get?
We had one bid.
It was a short discussion.
And so that was, we did adjust the amount to fit the budget because the bid was over what we budgeted, so we did subtract, adjust the project to the budget that we had.
Any further? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Then we have a lengthy discussion on the water bill appeal process, and it has, we kind of are making a policy. There's a part A and a part B. So the part A is any village water customer may appeal their water bill to the village administrator. It will be the administrator's discretion to determine the amount of relief, if any. The administrator will utilize the water meter data, water meter data, customer notification and other information in making that decision. Part B is if the customer wants further consideration, then the customer can appeal to the CIRP committee by providing a written request and being present in person at all meetings where the appeal is being discussed. The CIRP committee will consider both the administrator's decision and the customer's request. And with that, I make a motion to adopt both parts A and B of the water bill appeal policy with the addition that the final decision is with the CIRP committee.
Motion as read by Chairman Saylor?
Second.
Second by Trustee Bingham, discussion. This is going to save a lot of times because Eric knows we were on the board a couple of years ago. This used to tie up 50 minutes of a board meeting when you're discussing stuff like this. And if the administrator is in charge, basically the go-to guy, head of the water department and stuff, then it should be his discretion what to do. And it doesn't belong at the board, but to give a person an appeal process, as Chairman Saylor read, they can go to the CIRP committee, but that's where it stops. Go. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Any chairman's comments? Nothing? Okay. Alrighty, we will move on to Planning, Property and Information Technology Committee. Chairman Duncan.
Everyone has had an opportunity to review the minutes of our meeting. Any questions?
The only, I, we're straight on our times now for the August meeting with everything coming up. We're at, because I know you might have had a problem with...
Well, I asked to move it up a little bit so that I could accommodate because I'm, my office is running the neighborhood table that night, so that's been agreed so that I'll miss a little bit, but then I, well, it's still, I kind of feel like I shouldn't require my employees to appear when I'm not, so...
I agree.
Anyway, all right. If there's no questions or anything, then I'm going to move to approve the Amendment of Ordinance 17.08-1-C, garden and yards shed maximum square footage to 180 square feet.
Motion as read by Chairman Duncan, second.
Second.
Second by Trustee Grundon. Any discussion?
Any question on any of that aspect, because it's really not much of a change, but it just...
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Sue.
I was just going to ask, was there a comment? I was thinking it was a comment by Mike to even increase that more. So is that an issue? What, I'm not sure what I saw now or what I read through that fairly quickly.
The recommendation from the Plan Commission and the PIT Committee is just fine.
To go back to...
I think it started out at 160, the person that was asking for it to be increased. And then, if I remember right, Mike, you explained to me that there isn't, like you said, a whole lot of difference between 160 and 180. And I think the yard toys are just getting a little bit bigger and it doesn't really take away much from the... Okay, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'd move approval to amend the setback in the R3L district 25 feet.
Motion as read by Chairman Duncan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Mitchell. Any discussion? Mike, do you think another review about why it was changed or anything is in order?
Well, I think maybe the minutes talked about it a little bit. The R3L zone had a different setback than the eastern part of Neptun Lake where the PUD is. This provides some consistency around the lake in development and just so all the waterfront setbacks are consistent.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And motion to approve Certified Survey Map 5245 for Anthony Shea.
Motion as read by Chairman Duncan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, excuse me, Trustee Grundon. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Committee chairmen's comments, any?
I just indicated there have been ongoing conversations with DMI, and the result of some of my conversations with them. Leadership will be discussed during our closed session.
And eventually we'll have a sit-down for the board committee of all we brought up today, I presume?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman Duncan. Moving on to Public Safety Committee.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee met on July 26th, and after some review of the part-time officers and the position, we are going, I am going to make a motion that we approve the hiring of Mitchell Jajewski as a part-time officer contingent upon completing hiring requirements.
Motion as read by Chairman Martinson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Grundon, discussion.
I do have a question. Have those contingencies been met? Yeah. For the most part, they haven't been asserted in the ballgame ruling tomorrow, assuming this motion passes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
And I'd also like to make a motion to approve the SRO memorandum of understanding.
Second.
Motion as read by Trustee Martinson, second by Chairman Martinson, second by Trustee Duncan, to approve the School Resource Officer Memorandum of Understanding, discussion. Hearing no request, all those in favor will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Committee comments, or chairman's comments, if any.
No, I don't have any at this time.
We did have a question, Eric and I, when my nephew's in from the state of Washington, he's a fireman out there in Puget Sound. And while we were talking, a couple of the firemen approached me about the salary thing, and I told them now is the time because we're starting the budget process. And I believe they're going to make a request, which we can do, to talk to Finance and Human Resource at a closed session. And we're going to have a closed session anyway to set, you know, to get the FHR committee together on the parameters of the budget, what's in and what's not. So I just wanted to point that out to you. They were going to contact you on, correct?
I was going to talk to him.
Oh, okay.
September 6th, if possible. I'll talk to you afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, you're on again. We will move to Finance and Human Resource Committee.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the payment of the bills.
Second.
Motion as read by Chairman Martinson, second by Trustee Duncan, approve payment of the bills, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I'd also like to make a motion to approve the journal entries of the previous month.
Motion by, as read by Chairman Martinson, second by Trustee Saylor, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Unfinished business. New business has already been completed, and we will move in for the report from the village administrator. Michael.
Well, we have a significant change in how we deal with waste and recycling. It'll start Monday, August 27th, advanced disposal. We'll be delivering carts for recycling and waste. It'll be completed that week, and the village residents will get information about those carts tucked underneath the covers. And so there's a few changes out there. The pickup day will be Wednesday, every month, recycling every other week. Or, yeah, Wednesday each week with recycling every other week. There'll be a calendar on the brochure that comes with the cart, with the two carts, and it'll really make the community look better on pickup day, and it'll be very easy to roll these carts out from your garage to the street. And so those brochures will be delivered to each place, and so we're really looking forward to that service.
And that's one pickup day for the entire village?
Yes. And splash pad update, you know, decided earlier at earlier CIRP committee meeting, we're looking at here, right here at Alexander Edward Park, to have the splash pad. And so we're working with MSA to do those design plans this fall. And then, so those specific standards and designs will be completed this fall. In this winter, the project will be bid and will be completed next summer. So we're looking forward to having some splash pad services for our youth next year. 2019 budget update, we had our kickoff meeting at the FHR meeting, and so we're looking forward to going through that process and going through reviewing several policies, our fee schedule as well. And we have a timeline, not sure, I can't remember if I... What's that?
August 29.
August 29. Not sure what that is about, but I think I included a schedule on the budget process in the packet. If it's not in there, I'll make sure you get it. And that, is it there? That's all I have. Any questions from the board?
I guess I was hoping, Mike, that the village would notify residents before they got this thing dropped in their driveway. You know, just a card. It didn't go in the, it must have went in the newsletter, right? Or spring, well, we didn't know in the spring.
Right. And this one won't be out until after.
Right. I mean, I'm okay, but I, you know, all of a sudden, I thought advanced disposal was going to do something in advance of dropping, and I may have misunderstood that.
No, you didn't.
Okay.
I thought they were willing to do a postcard or something.
Yeah, and...
That was correct.
You know, I just think some, you know, I can see some residents not understanding what's going on.
Especially old ladies.
Pardon?
Especially old ladies.
Actually...
Mature, Tommy, mature lady.
Actually, I don't have a problem with the containers because they're proven to be effective for all ages. And, you know, I don't have a problem with going with it. I just, the way we're introducing it, you know, problem is the wrong word. I don't have a problem at all. I just would like to have communicated before they got them in their driveway. Obviously, it's too late, we're on the 15th today. I doubt if anything could go out before the 27th. But it would have been nice to get a postcard that the village is changing, and on the 27th, you'll get this thing in your driveway, more instructions attached, and that's about it. But just, that's just my perspective.
That's 12 days yet.
Well, I'm just throwing it out there.
If they're willing to send a card, that could be done within the week.
You know, how many residences, households, approximately? I don't even know that number.
You're changing days of pickup.
Right.
By putting a card in with no notification.
Well, I'm agreeing with you.
There are a few things that us, or we as trustees are... This is the, this is the, this is the outer facade of our duties. There's a lot of stuff we do that nobody cares about. But some of the important things that the village does that need to be done correctly, trash pickup, plowing streets, picking up the lawn weeds. If you don't do those well, the rest of that stuff doesn't matter. Nobody will pay attention.
So I guess, is there any way that, how many households are there?
I think 700.
Could you communicate with the...
There's probably, I want to say 850 water bills that go out.
Okay. I mean, probably 400 won't even care that they got the card, but the other 400 will. And I think, you know, we need to make the effort. If you could talk, I, my opinion is we should talk with advance.
Could you call Mr. Martin?
Sure, sure.
And just say the board expressed that concern?
And remind him he did say at the last board meeting that he was going to publicize it, because that way you could be inundated with calls, you know, instead of...
Or us?
Yeah. Instead of tired pitchforks later on.
Absolutely.
You know, somebody asked me, what's happening in Port? And I said, hmm, well, we're getting new garbage cans. But it's that big a deal, because it is, as Dana pointed out, visible.
Yeah. And I thought he agreed, I thought he agreed to, yeah, send out postcards.
Yeah, let's follow up on that.
You know, those are the things that, like Dana alluded to and John about, the snow plowing, the leaf pickup, the grass flipping, the brush, those are the tangible things that people really associate with their tax levy, and rightfully so. And that's where your public relations really... And that's where your public relations really fall.
I know, we could have the most perfect budget, we could have, you know, everything all right, and nobody's paying attention, but you don't pick up their garbage on a particular day, that they'll be upset with.
Since being president, I didn't know I worked for the village group, because I get calls on that, and rightfully so.
Yep.
Anything else, John? Oh, Tiara, I'm sorry.
I have a couple of things on the splash pad. Do you have an estimated cost annual maintenance?
We did some estimates in the planning timeframe, planning estimates based on other communities, and some of that translates closely, now they're not, because of water rates, but we had, our planning number is ten to twelve thousand.
And then the other thing, I, the, I had mentioned it to you, I think on the phone, the disc golfing, we've got like this great thing going there, and it's like we drop the ball, and it's kind of embarrassing.
On what?
The keeping us a disc golfing area, so, and I had, I thought that myself, and then when I went to vote tonight, somebody made a really harsh comment about it being a nature, an unkempt nature trail. So, and I wasn't, I'm not sure, is that the PIT committee or the streets that would be the...
That's CERC committee.
Because I would hope that we would have like a, here's our expectation, and, you know, it's, there's, there's a couple rusty old box springs out there, there's a bench with stuff coming up through it. I think we can just do better, we can like, because it's really cool. So, that's that.
Yeah, my original understanding when I was on the, well chaired it last year when they came, I thought that group was, correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, I don't remember exact, they did the initial layout.
It's all set up.
But were they gonna do any upkeep, or was that gonna keep falling us? I don't remember.
They did fill it up.
Did it, okay, I do not recall.
Is it trash that's up there, or, I guess I haven't walked back there?
No, there's, at each post, there's trash things, and when we go through, you know, we don't have to pick up more than a couple of things, but it's like, there are two rusty old metal box springs that come in two different spots, there's, where it's not weed whacked, it's like, it, it looks like just kind of a project that was gonna be really great on paper, and it's kind of half done.
We can put that on the agenda, or we can talk to Del or...
Or you could've called me. I left you a message.
I'm just kidding.
Okay, is Tiara, oh, I'm sorry, all right. Anything else here?
Not tonight.
Okay.
Well, you're wound up tonight, that's good.
Okay, everybody knows our, it's time for our clerk treasurer report, and I'm, I'm very happy to, Diana, of course, is busy with, I voted today, and Kim is here as our deputy clerk, so I turn it over to you, madam.
I have nothing for you.
Okay, I've got it, that, that way. This is kind of like old days when I was chief and, you know, she instructed me what was to be done for the day, and it's really great. But anyway, moving on. Trustees' comments, this is something new and not picking on Tiara, but classic is what she just brought up, because we have chairman's comments, and I think at the end of the meeting, we should just have a good old, you know, anybody's got anything to do, this is the time to bring it up.
Thank you and the crew for taking that stupid pine tree down on Port Road, because if you, first of all, people are driving up that road from fifty-four way too fast, but there's enough of a dip that if you, if they're speeding at all with that tree there, you could not see them until you started into the intersection, so that makes a huge difference. I think it's gonna prevent somebody getting teed over, yeah, so, but yes, thanks for that. You're welcome.
My only comment is Sue, the new neighbor of my house, is gonna take down the big pine tree on the corner of Pleasantview Drive and Port Road too. He's, he's removing that, and that's gonna help, so.
Yep.
And my tree was trimmed also, so that's made a difference as well.
Yeah, and, you know, and so that road is, I think, and to be perfectly honest, do we have the, do we set the speed limit on that road?
On Port Road or on?
Port Road.
It's called a collector's road, yes, that's under...
Can we put that on the agenda, because I'm thinking that we should possibly reduce the speed limit on it.
Um, what is it currently?
Forty.
We, we can, this would be a thing for Chairman Martinson, but I would ask Administrator Cornman, when you, when you do stuff like that, the last time we looked at it, we accumulate, Chief Uvian on this too, I had to get all of our statistics for accidents, the citations, what we did and speeding especially, and there's some DOT stuff that we'd have to get too, well, I'm sure you know about this, working on it with the counties. So if we did that, I think it's a good point, but it's, maybe that's something we could put on October.
That's fine, I just, I just think that having, you know, I spend, well, I'm on that road two, three, four times a day coming off of Verbunker, and it's, I think it's a safety hazard, if you have any ice or snow in the winter, people are driving way too fast there too, and I know we've had one major accident at that intersection since I've lived in the village, so.
There's been a lot of them on there, so I guess my suggestion between now and October, Chairman Martinson, if you would, it's up to you to put that on your agenda, I would, there's a lot of stuff that we're gonna have to get together, and Chief, and Mike, and Chairman Martinson will have to put that together for us. Is that okay?
That's fine, and trust me, if I'm asking for lower speed limits, I must really be concerned.
I have one question. For bunker, that's getting ground down next week?
I believe tomorrow.
Okay, so is it gonna be, is it gonna be open? So I just want to let people know that.
That's, that's my understanding, yes. We'll continue to be...
Take a day or a couple days to... I just want to make people aware that the end of the bunker, I think, down, is gonna be ground down and redone.
That's when they put those bump signs up, nobody pays attention to them. Usually go and pick up mufflers. Just kidding.
I'm sorry, I have one more thing. The Fun Fest last weekend, I think there's so much credit due for the people that did that, the Fun Fest committee, Business Council, the Lions Club, Police Department, Fire Department, they were all out in full force, and it was to bring my grandkids down. It was like, wow, you know, we got something really, really great going on in our community, and, and I think, I, I didn't get around to people enough to say thank you, and you could see, it was really hot, and people really working hard for, you know, just for our community, so I think that's something to be noted.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, I have one thing, and that's, Chairman Saylor, well, I guess I'd have to address Mike first, have the quotes come in on the possible purchase by the village for a boardroom of the medical arts? They haven't. If you could get something together, again, Eric, I don't expect it next month, maybe, and, you know, this hot weather and how this building is today, I, I would like something to start moving on that, is to talk about the quotes, how much it's gonna cost, blah, 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 because I think not only do we need a permanent home, a boardroom, but it's, regulate the atmosphere a little bit better too. So is that something that maybe you two could...
The quote from Better Built Homes came today, it's in your mailbox.
Oh, okay. What did I say, folks? She ran on the ball all the time, so. So if, if you...
We can put it on, I think our meeting's next Tuesday, you know?
Yeah, you still wouldn't have time, but I didn't know you got, the highway commissioner's coming down, any?
Yeah, we're looking at the agenda, I mean, we got the whole thing, but yeah, we'll put it on there.
I'll talk to Del, because I'm not sure, he was heading up the, the email on that, I'm not sure if there was one contractor involved or multiple, and, and the last update I had that no one had been in there, so.
It's been a while since he notified people about trying to get quotes.
So anyways, I'll...
Well, if you guys could do it in September's meeting, fine, but don't cut yourself short with the highway commissioner and...
I'm fine, if we're gonna be there a little longer, let's get all this done.
Okay, thank you. Alrighty, committee calendar, and as usual, if I've made a mistake, please point it out to me, but you probably won't have to tonight since Kim's here, but the committee calendar is the twenty-first of this month, five PM, the CERC committee in the municipal, down at Village Hall Municipal Building. On the twenty-third, at five PM, is Public Safety, also at Village Hall at five o'clock. On the twenty-eighth, now Scott and Chairman Duncan, correct me if I'm wrong, but four o'clock will be the...
Planning Commission.
Okay, and when does your group meet?
Joint review boards at three.
Oh, at three, okay.
Plan commission's at four, PIT is at five.
Okay, four and then five.
PIT is at four thirty.
Four thirty.
Or as soon after as planning commission is over, so.
Okay, three o'clock for the, the review, folks, four o'clock for the plan commission, four thirty for the PIT committee, and don't forget to contact our planning commission guys, so they, they know. There's a couple, they said they get contacted at one meeting that you had, just point it out.
I visited each one at the last, prior to the last planning commission, went to each household, called and sent letters, in person and in the mailbox.
And they're all there, the last one, I'm talking about the one before. Whatever, that's your ballpark. Alrighty, September sixth, the Thursday, five PM, will be the Finance and Human Resource Committee, and on September eleventh, at seven PM, the village board meeting, right here at Edwards Alexander Park. The chair will now entertain a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, conducting other specified public business, wherever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, as said in statute nineteen point eighty-five, subparen E, as in Edwards.
So who?
Motion by trustee Martinson, second by trustee Duncan to go into closed session. The clerk will call the robe.
Trustee Martinson, here. Trustee Duncan.
Aye.
Trustee Saylor.
Here.
Trustee Mitchell, here. Trustee Grundon.
Yes.
And trustee Bingham.
Yes. We are in a closed session, let's take a brief break. Okay, we are now back into reconvened in open session, and the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Before we do so, I'm just going to put on the record that there is a potential that we will be convening a special PIT meeting in the evening of the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth of August.
And that would be in conjunction with the PIT meeting or after?
Be a separate meeting after the regular PIT meeting.
And that be in closed session also?
Yes.
Okay. Okey dokey, my motion's still out there, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Mitchell, who stands adjourned.
And anybody who wants to...
All that for one minute, they say.